Let's officially call the Monday, March 8th, Meeting of the Pock City Board of Education to order. Will you join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brett?
Pray with me. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestow on us each and every day. We must realize just how many positives we have in our life and be thankful for them. Please be with our state and national leaders as they are in session trying to discern good bills from bad bills and the implications of their actions. Sometimes there are unintentional consequences with some laws passed. Help them make good, sound decisions for the citizens of our state and our nation. Also, we ask that you keep close our men and women of the armed forces. Keep them safe from harm and bring them home soon. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Can you see it, please? Cheyenne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Newsom?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Rowland?
Present.
Mr. Stewart?
Present.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the presentation and recognitions. But before we do that, I would like to officially welcome Anna Rowland as the newest board member.
Thank you.
Welcome, Anna.
Welcome, Anna.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
So with that said and done, our first of the Friends of Education Awards goes to the Certified Employee of the Month, Jason Collins.
Oh, and there he is. On the screen.
On the screen. There he is.
You really have him looking.
Well, obviously, I don't know that, too.
There you go, over there, yeah.
Got it this way.
Okay. It's an honor to present Coach Jason Collins with the March Certified Employee of the Month. Coach Collins is a physical education teacher at Trout Elementary. He brings a positive light into our lives. He generally cares for every student and coworker. People light up when they see Coach Collins in the hallway or classroom. He has a room, he has room in his heart for every student. One teacher shared a writing prompt, "Something that makes me smile is." Five out of 15 students wrote Coach Collins under the prompt.
Wow.
Students recognize the real thing. He is a high-energy teacher that combines fun, movement, skills, music with a beat, fun, strategy, healthy, living, more and more fun. In addition to stirring up students at Trout, Coach Collins, Coach Collins coaches football, basketball, track at Poe High. He does admit back-to-back classes of kindergarten P E R, a great jumpstart to his coaching duties. Recently, he shared his tips on building successful program. Set your precedence, build a relationship with students, set high expectations, and reaffirm your standards. Coach Jason Collins is a man that fits the role of teacher and coach. He is the person you would choose to be a mentor for your child. Thank you, Coach, for being a bright and guiding light in our world. You make, you are making a difference in the lives of children. Congratulations, Coach Collins.
It's true.
Very good.
Kids love him. I get lots of calls from parents, and anytime it's a Trout parent, they say, oh, by the way, Coach Collins is the discussion topic at dinner every night, so, in a positive way.
Our next will be the Support Employee of the Month. It's Kelly Furnakis, a custodian at the maintenance department.
Support Employee of the Month, Kelly Furnakis. We are so proud that our very own Mr. Kelly has been named Employee of the Month for March. Our staff describes Kelly as having a great attitude, kind, hardworking, and funny. He truly has the best sense of humor which makes people smile. Kelly is flexible and speedy. When the district was shorthanded this winter, Kelly helped clean several other buildings while also cleaning our entire building each night and maintaining a can-do, positive attitude. When we ask Kelly for help with a cleanup, a project, or repair, he does so without hesitation, and he's happy to do it. Kelly takes pride in his work. He not only helps to keep our building tidy, he also helps to make sure our teachers have what they need to keep their rooms clean, sanitized, and stocked with supplies. We are so grateful to have Kelly as a part of our team. Congratulations for a job well done, Mr. Kelly.
Very good. Congratulations, Kelly. The last one will be the Friend of Education Newport Church, supporter of the Pock City Public Schools.
Friend of Education Newport Church, Cheyenne and Becca from the Newport Church made the first week of school very special for the teachers at Pock City High School this year. They provided a coffee bar for the week to energize and welcome back our teachers. They brought nice greetings and positive vibes to support our teachers, and the good vibes carried everyone throughout each day. Thank you, Cheyenne and Becca, and everyone at Newport Church. Your generosity was appreciated greatly by everyone at Pock City High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations to Newport Church. Next on the agenda is the public comments. I don't see any unfamiliar faces out there. Who's Betty? We don't have any.
Right over here.
There you are. You moved us. We don't have any public comments, do we? Moving right along. The next will be a presentation from Wilson Dotson Associates on the annual audit report.
We're calling.
And Brenda is.
Okay, I'm calling her.
Hello?
Hi, Pam, are you ready? This is Brenda.
Wait, that wasn't five minutes.
I thought they would take longer, but Brett talked really fast.
Okay, hold on just a second, let me pull over.
Okay.
I was sitting there timing myself.
So can everybody hear?
Can everybody hear? Is this one?
Barely.
Excuse me?
Maybe move over this way, Brenda, so.
Okay.
Okay, I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay, we're ready.
I think Brett's getting a mic.
You know, I say that, my presentation puts us in the backseat, but I don't really need it. Is this a good level for everybody?
Yes, you can talk a little louder if you can.
Okay. I went over the audit report with the finance committee last week and let them know that we did not have any findings related to the audit report. In fact, you are one of the few districts that we didn't have any findings on. One thing I relate to the finance committee is that because of COVID and the fact that everybody had to leave their buildings and were not allowed back in, and people were just having to scramble to not only get the children taught but to conduct business, we've had so many unusual recommendations coming out of the 2020 audits, but your district did not have any of those. In fact, from what I remember, not only did you not have any findings, you're in a good financial position to meet what you have coming up in the future as far as the uncertainty that surrounds everything. Does anybody have any specific questions for me?
No.
No?
I don't. She answered all our questions. Yep.
Yeah, no, they said that Mr. Riley, Mr. Newsom said you answered their questions last week, so, and no one else has any additional.
Well, you're getting off late tonight for people talking, aren't you?
We really are. People are going past tonight. You'd think there was a basketball game or something.
Well, no. You guys are doing a good job, apparently.
Well, thank you.
Apparently.
Is that all?
That's all for me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Pam, we appreciate it.
Well, you're very welcome. You guys have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Is that the same one that we've had?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
You find some little something.
They found stuff last time, just, they're, they're... They had no findings this time. I mean, congratulations to Brenda and staff for everything they've done, I mean.
Great job. It's an amazing job. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, normally, they find something. I mean, a good audit is considered they'll find something.
Yeah, but it's pretty small.
Usually minimal.
Yeah.
I mean, they do find something, but in COVID times, hey, we haven't had as much action.
That's true.
Haven't spent as much money.
That was great. Later on, we will vote to accept the audit, later on in the agenda. Next up is the superintendent's report with potential board discussions considering legislative action and COVID-19 updates.
All right, so you know we're in session now, and we've got a big deadline coming up where the legislators do. All bills have to be heard in the House of Origin on March 11th, and that would be Thursday, I'm guessing. Today's the 8th, so we think there'll be a lot of action. I've got a quick update for you, and there's two things that I'll really focus on. Some concerns for us is House Bill 2074, and it's the bill in regard to open transfers. And this law will make significant changes to the open transfer law, including eliminating emergency transfers and making it easier for students to transfer between school districts. And there can be appeals if we do not accept someone, and this is the first time that I know of it, that the state board can actually overrule the local board on appeals. So that's one thing that we don't, we want to keep local control in-house. So the bill is going to pass, we're hearing that. I've heard it from our own representative and senator, and this is a favorable bill for the governor, for the Speaker of the House, and for the president pro temp. And a lot of this has to do with COVID, and schools being in session or not in session. You know, we've been in session every day that we could, a lot of schools went to A B, a lot of schools weren't in session at all. And, you know, that's a, between the governor and Tulsa Public Schools, that's been a big thorn, and he is pushing for this, and I know that our legislators want to stay in favor with the, with the state leadership, too, as well. So we know it's going to pass, it passed the full House, 77 to 22, and now goes to the Senate. I do believe that the Senate will pass it as well, but here are a few concerns. They would be available all year long, not just within a window, so we would never know when students could be coming to Pock City Public Schools. The next concern is, we have to have a policy in place defining capacity at all of our sites, and we have to post that on our website. Right now, the verbiage is specific to a site, like if they choose Woodlands and there's capacity, we would have to let students go into Woodlands. Our lobbyists believe that they'll get that verbiage changed, that if you want to come to Pock City Public Schools, we'll put you in a place where we have room. So that is a concern for us. And I already mentioned this to you, a student who is denied would have their right to appeal to the local board, and then the law allows for it to go to the state board, and we want to keep that in local control. The Office of Educational Quality and Accountability would also have the authority to audit portions of the transfer process and even override our district's decision on its capacity to accept transfers. So once we set capacity, O E Q A can override that, and I don't know what basis that will be on if the, if the bill passes, we'll know more then. We looked at our open transfer policy, and we do not have limits set. Now, we do have limits set for in-district transfer policy, so my guess is, just from superintendent's discussions, we'll go back to House Bill 1017 guidelines and set that as our capacity and go from there.
I have a question.
Okay.
So anybody can transfer from anywhere? They can leave another city and come here, correct?
Correct.
Is that money moving there, coming here? Are we still stuck with no money?
Our money, and that's another concern, our, our ad valorem money then goes to students from other districts, and here's the honest truth of it, we typically do not deny open transfers. If someone's unhappy, we'll go ahead and approve that, and we've asked the legislators to take that into consideration. Look at our data before you take away local control on that, but no, the money would not...
I know, they talked about that, and I just wondered if, if that's still, they weren't going to do it.
But wherever they were on October 1st is where the money will go.
Okay.
So if it happens after October 1st, it'll stay with the school. And then that's another concern, and I mentioned this to you last time, if our, if our bond issues, when our voters vote, they obligate the money for our district students, so our taxpayers are paying money for other district students to come in. Now, I don't know if this is going to be a big issue, but it's out there. And, and again, I know it stems from choice in schools being open, schools not being open, and the governor believes that parents have a right to be in a school that operates to what's best for them.
I think it's going to look at the metro, metros, because somebody from Edmond might want to go to Norman.
I think that's where the bigger issues will be in the metro areas.
I think it's, I think they're going to be looking at that, Tulsa.
Yeah.
They'll be pulling out of Tulsa, going to them outer schools, just...
Imagine the sports situation.
Yeah, I think, I think Stitt's approach is to, with Tulsa, public schools close as tight as they have been.
Yeah.
People will pull out and go to the broken areas, the Bixmes, the Owassos, the Glenpools.
Clairemore, they've all had school.
Yeah.
They'll be going to Glenpool, and they'll be going...
I don't think it will impact us because we're an entity to itself, and it's pretty hard to transfer. At least you go to Blackwell or Tonkawal or something like that.
Yeah. Well, here are some exceptions to House Bill 2074. Here's the allowable criteria for denial, if we have no capacity under our B O P, B O E policy capacity limits, but then the O E Q A can override that, and I don't know exactly how that...
But I don't think that will hit us, because at one time we had over 5,000 students, and we're down to 4,400 now, so we, our capacity limit's going to be pretty high.
Well, we might not have the staff to control all that, and here, here's another one of my concerns, if we post that on our website, what if we have our own, own students that move into our district, and we don't have room for them because we are
Right.
full with other students? So we would probably try to reroute those students, or we couldn't at East West and the high school, but to our elementary schools, put them at our schools with lower numbers if it becomes an issue.
Is the issue, do they specify that work school they're going to? Do they, is this, like, if they want to go to, so if they want to go to Trout, but we don't have room for them, we can send them somewhere else, can't we?
The verbiage right now says the site. Our lobbyists think they will get that changed, but they say that it will pass, that the district can move them to whatever site they have available.
Yeah.
But the verbiage is per site right now. Of course, it's just past the floor. Students on suspension cannot be approved for a transfer, that's in law anyway. If a student is on long-term suspension, they don't have to come, but if they're a discipline issue, doesn't matter, we would still have to take them, only if they're on suspension. They have to serve out their suspension before they can transfer, which is current law right now. Excessive absenteeism, we can deny for that. So a lot of, a lot of districts are building in these absentee policies, and they've kind of gone by the wayside this year because of COVID, but we're going to get on board next year with that. So if they're just jumping from school to school, it's not going to work. Here's something noteworthy that we didn't know at first that wasn't written in, OSS A requirements would remain in place. So they can't transfer and just go and play on a team, so they would have to sit out and...
Whatever the rules are.
I was wondering, because that would be a big goal to...
That could be a problem for us, you know, if they want to go to Tonkawal and be on a state championship team or whatever, but they would be ineligible for the year.
We've got Jason here, the athletic director. In this case, do they have to sit out a full year?
That's what she just said.
They can still go to school, but they have to sit out the...
They have to still be a bona fide resident of that school district in order to get immediate eligibility, so they can't just jump right in and participate and establish their eligibility at that new school unless approved on hardship that's outside of the student's control.
So they could never transfer just to play sports? They could transfer to go to school,
Right.
but they couldn't transfer to play sports, correct?
For that year.
It's a 15-day wait period once they move into a district to allow schools to do the transaction.
If they actually move in, but if they don't move, if a Tonkawal kid wants to come to Pock to play football, he has to sit out one year or the whole time?
If they still live in Tonkawal.
It's just one year.
Okay.
But if they move here, then it's a different story. But this open transfer is for wherever you live, if they can get them here. And truthfully, I mean, somebody might drive 45 miles from Stillwater to have their kids in school all day. Hopefully, COVID's not going to be a big issue, but basically, I'm hearing our legislators saying they're tired of hearing about choice. This gives choice. I do think it's going to be more in the metropolitan areas, be a lot of red tape for us, because we have to report every quarter on the number of transfers and how many openings we have, so be another mandate for us. Here's a big one that...
So, I'm sorry, just to back up, just a quick question on that, because I'm not, I'm not sure where Pock is going with, in regards to virtual teaching after, you know, post-COVID.
I'm glad you asked that, Anna. We are going to continue on with PCVA. We started with 608 students in PCVA. I think we're about to 324 right now, so almost half of where we were. It is going to change the landscape for education. We are going to offer PCVA at all levels, at elementary, middle school, and high school, but it'll be more like Wildcat Academy, more of an interview process, and, you know, some of our kids are more successful, and here's what we're finding, it's our introverts that do better in PCVA, you know, that have social anxiety when they're around other students, but for the most part, we know that we want our kids to be in face-to-face learning, but we are going to continue on with that. Maybe one teacher, 35, 40 kids at the elementary school, same at middle school, and then more at high school, in addition to our Wildcat Academy.
To the edgenuity?
Yes.
That sounds like it.
Whatever their elementary version is.
Mm-hmm. Accelerate. And did you have your meeting with your edgenuity rep? We have not yet. Okay. You know that we kind of got, had a high payment for our elementary because schools were in a bind and they had to have something, so they may be able to negotiate more. We'll continue PCVA with our S R 2 funds, and we'll bring that to Finance, Property Committee next month. We met with all of our principals today, but it will be on a much smaller scale, maybe even a third of where we are right now.
I just had wondered in relation to, with H B 2074, if that would, you know, have any implications for the funding for teachers? If, if we were continuing that, that is a school choice, you know, that
Yes.
the district that parents would have to be able to help, because I think it's, it is important to have choice for all students with all different abilities.
It is, and we are going to go ahead and offer that moving forward. We've had middle school teachers that are teaching at the middle school, like, they have some sections that they'll meet with virtual students on, but what we'll do is, we're going to have some extra teachers from PCVA that will move back into open positions, so we'll have teachers specified for PCVA, not near the amount that we have, so.
Has the curriculum committee explored hybrid learning at all, blended learning?
No, we haven't. Just those two. We want our kids back in the classroom for sure, and our data shows that parents want them back in the classroom as well.
Right, yeah, definitely.
So I will say, though, that we have some students who are highly successful with PCVA.
I agree, yeah.
And it's a good option, and we want to give them choice. Okay, so with our state funding formula, I talked about this a lot last month, and I'll continue to talk about it. Now, it's my understanding that the transfer bill and the state funding formula adjustment are kind of a package with our leaders, the governor, the speaker, and the pro temp, but I do hear that the state funding formula is, the Senate doesn't have such an appetite for change as the House does, and that has already actually passed the House floor. It would change the basis for the state funding formula, that we would just be able to look back the previous year and one year. Now we can look back two years, so that could be a big problem for us, so we could only use the highest weighted average daily membership from the current year or the prior, or the prior year. It did pass on the floor last week and now goes to the Senate, but again, I don't think the Senate has such an appetite, so I'm not going to read every single word of this to you, but here are some concerns, it destabilizes the school budgets, we never know what our enrollment's going to be, and every year.
I don't know that we've had an increase in enrollment. I can't tell you the last, last time we've had an increase.
It's been a long time. We're decreasing every year, but any shift in the economy of a community can change our average daily membership, and we had to cut $1.9 million that we focused on for the last two years because we had a two-year lookback period, and that's almost impossible to cut that much in a year, or even one year. So it doesn't give us enough time to plan, it exasperates the teacher shortage. We have worked hard, or the state has worked hard, too, to gain some momentum with the teacher shortage, but bottom line is, 85% of our budget has to do with personnel, so if we have to look at the current year or last year, we just may have to riff teachers, go to reduction in force. And typically, with a two-year lookback, we can absorb those and fill those cuts through attrition and not have to riff, so this could actually increase the teacher shortage, and we've made headway. It discourages and jeopardizes educational innovation. It takes time to put in some new programs, and in our property and finance committee, we talked about a STEM lab being a big project for us with our next bond election, and we're looking at some training and having a lot of meetings with Project Lead the Way, which is a really popular STEM program, and, you know, that could jeopardize that if we're having to make big cuts, and we don't want to have to do that. We do have S R funds that I'll talk to you more about next month, but those are, those have to be allocated by September of 2023, so long-term, we don't want this to happen. It punishes students and declining enrollments. We get, sometimes our cities can be victims of demographics and population trends, and our families follow jobs because they have to. Well, it puts an issue on our current students. Our current students suffer if we, if we're a district in declining enrollment because we can't make plans moving forward. And one thing, Anna, that you don't know about that we've worked on, we have a five-year plan to reduce our class sizes back to House Bill 1017, and we're still on track with that, but the concern is, will we be able to stay on track? And chances are, we would have enough teachers resign, and we could hire teachers back, but we don't want to riff teachers and then hire them back. And we feel like this is being rushed. There were a lot of studies last year about the school funding formula, and we know there is a need to serve our E L students at a higher rate, and we know there's a need to serve our high-poverty students, but nothing has been brought up about reducing the funding for other districts where we don't have the two-year lookback, and we're afraid that legislators are rushing into this without doing some vetting and some long-term studies. So I think there is still some hope out there. I talked to Senator Coleman Friday night, I believe, and he said that the Senate just does not have the appetite for this bill as the House does, but I know that...
Did you speak to our House representative?
Uh-uh.
What was their...
Well, he has not responded to me, but he, he did vote yes, so.
And the, the...
And then I talked to Ty Burns as well, he's not ours, but he did teach for us, and, and that is on the horizon, so it's going to pass the House for sure, it already did.
Have the teachers union's been vocal?
Zach!
O E A is opposed to it.
Yes.
From what has been determined with that, those two bills, the open transfer and the funding formula, there's also two pretty bad voucher bills. It seems that for the House leadership, if we, if they get the open transfer and the funding formula change, vouchers will be off the table for at least a couple of years. So it's kind of one of those
Give and take.
... you do, bang, if you know, situations.
Right.
So O E A has been opposed to it because of the, all the reasons that Ms. Harris already gave.
Okay, thank you.
And in the administrative organizations are opposed to COSA and OSSBA.
Okay.
So I'm just going to go over these quickly, I don't want to spend a lot of time. There were a lot of bills that were discussed this last week. House Bill 1593 would mandate that our teachers have to complete some programs on digital teaching and learning, workplace safety, and alcohol and drug abuse. This did pass, it was effective, it would become effective November 1st if the Senate passes that as well and the governor signs into law. So, and this comes about through COVID, too, so not opposed to this, it must be completed the first year a teacher's employed by a district and then repeated every fourth year. So I believe it's five years, actually, repeated every five years. House Bill 1963 would allow the governor to appoint a school board member to a local board if we lack enough members to have a quorum and conduct business. So for example, for the position, Ward 4 position, when it came open, if we didn't have any applicants, we would have to have a quorum to conduct, to conduct business, and we need an odd number, so we would, that could be appointed by... we would have to have a quorum to conduct, to conduct business and, uh, we need an odd number. So, um, we would, that could be appointed by.
It was really for the smaller schools, the three-member boards, whenever they loo- lose two people and they, that one person can't vote. Uh, it would be tough to.
I don't think that'll affect us, but yeah, we have to have.
I think it's just those three-member boards that we have out there.
Like our county commissioners. With the three county commissioners, they can't talk to each other.
Yeah.
Because to them, talking becomes an open meeting violation.
This one's an easy one. House Bill ten forty-six requires us to have a hot hyperlink to our audit and our financial reports on our district website. And I'll say, hey, yeah, we'll do that. It did pass. Uh, House Bill seventeen ninety-six allows the state board to exempt a teacher from taking a subject area exam in, um, a section that doesn't require a master's if they have a master's in a related field. And, you know, maybe they have a master's in health, something to do with health. Then we could have them teach a phys ed class or something like that since they have a master's without the subject area test. And that's just to get more teachers in. Uh, some senate bills that were highlighted, Senate Bill eight oh seven, uh, requires support employees to be entitled to pay for any lost time if we're closed because of a pandemic or if health officials declare such an issue. Um, so we did that last year anyway, and that was a, a governor's executive order. Now it's, uh, moving to become a law. House Senate Bill two fifty-two requires not until twenty-four, twenty-five that all public high schools offer one computer science course. All middle schools offer instruction in exploratory commu- uh, computer science and all elementary schools offer the basics of computer science content and computational thinking. And this could be offered as a virtual or a distance course if we didn't have enough classroom teachers to teach that course. And this comes about as COVID too, so, uh, our kids are knowledgeable in different platforms. Senate Bill two sixty-seven extends the timeline on a twenty-seventeen statute, which is a good thing, that allows retired teachers to return to the classroom through twenty twenty-four. So the, the verbiage of this bill has teachers, currently teachers have to sit out three years and then they can come back at full salary. Now, this would propose sitting out one year and coming back at full salary through twenty twenty-four and that can get us through a hump too. And as you know, our retired teachers are, um, master teachers. They've been in a long time and they're really good with management. And, um, one thing that we'll talk about, talk with you about next month is some of our ideas to respond to our learning gaps and that's maybe hire some interventionists to target our areas district-wide. And this is two-year money, so it can't be a reoccurring cost. Um, and it would be great if we could get some retired teachers to come in and target tho- those. Or it might be a good little, um, gig for our teachers who have only two more years before they retire. They may want to focus on that. And as soon as we talk to you about that, Curtis will get that posted and we'll move from there. Uh, some more senate bills. Uh, Senate Bill fifty-one removes the requirement for alternatively and traditionally certified teachers to pass the general education portion of the competency exams, which is the O G E T. And we, we have a couple that are struggling with the O G E T right now, don't we? So that would eliminate one problem. It's the general education test, not the subject area test. So, um, could go through. And this one's a big one that I'll let, uh, Zach speak to. And Zach, I haven't even talked to you about this since I spoke with Senator Coleman, but six thirty-four requires payroll deductions to a professional organization, which can be O E A, P O E, COSA, OSSBA, can be immediately terminated if the school district employee requests it. And we have to provide a form prescribed by the Secretary of Education in fourteen-point bold-faced font reading. I am aware that I have a First Amendment right as recommended by, or is recognized by the U S Supreme Court to refrain from joining and paying dues or making political contributions to a professional employee organization. It goes on, and I'm not going to read that to you. It passed in the senate and I talked to Senator Coleman, uh, right before this vote and he, he sent me a text and told me it was on the clock and he was voting no. And then he sent me a text back and said, when he saw that it passed, he changed his vote to an I because there was the vote to do this and then there was the emergency portion of this vote. After it passed, he went ahead and voted I for the emergency portion, but Friday night he told me that he could go back and change his vote. So he showed up as a no first, but he came back and, and showed up as an I.
Well, the, the no vote was for this. It's of the emergency portion is just saying, in making it an emergency, once the governor signs it, it becomes effective. If it's not an emergency, it has to wait ninety days after signature before it becomes effective. So voting yes as an emergency is really just inconsequential, um, in that term. The bill itself is, the, the author of it doesn't understand the Supreme Court case that she thinks she does. Um, it origi- the Supreme Court case was the Janus case out of California, which is an agency fee state. They allow bargaining agents who incur costs for bargaining to charge a fee to non-members of the association for the benefits they get from that bargain. Oklahoma has a right-to-work state, is not a bar- an agency fee state. Um, so if, if we incurred any expenses as the A C T for bargaining, we can't charge non-members a fee to cover those expenses. Uh, in the Supreme Court case, the, the plaintiff argued that it was a violation of their First Amendment rights that they had to pay for political speech they may not agree with. The Supreme Court ruled in favor and agency fee has now gone away. The author of this bill thinks that that also applies to payroll deduct and it doesn't. And that was even pointed out on the senate floor, um, that it doesn't apply to payroll deduct. It only applies to agency fee, which doesn't exist in Oklahoma. Our teachers already know they don't have to join O E A or A C T. Um, and frankly, it's illegal because it only targets education associations and other state laws say that anything like this has to apply to any, uh, union for public employees. So police, firemen, all those, they're not affected by that. So that actually makes this unconstitutional by state law.
So you don't think this one's going to stick?
We're hoping it will, we're hoping it will fail in the house. Um, I haven't had a chance to talk to Representative Latrell yet to see where he's standing on it.
I, I, I messaged him, but I haven't heard back. So, but I know Senator Coleman was opposed and I haven't talked to Representative Burns. I'll, I'll do that as well. But it did pass readily on the senate floor. All right, there were a lot more bills and I expect there to be several bills heard this week because again, that deadline is coming up in the House of Origin and then it goes to the opposite house. So I will give you a COVID update and it is optimistically surprisingly good news. Um, we did get our March fourth COVID alert risk level and it was an eight point two. And it was in the yellow level. That's eight point two average new cases in the county per capita of one hundred thousand. So the last time we were even remotely close was August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. So you can see where we've been as far as a county and I can tell you, we can feel it i- i- in the district. Our quarantines correlate with those risk levels. And at a red li- risk level, a lot of schools didn't go to school. Um, Enid started out that way, if I'm just talking about our schools that are in our area. Enid started out that way and they changed their, um, policy. Once they stayed in the red. Stillwater stayed with the red levels. They went to full-distance learning. They went to A B at orange two. They have since met and changed their policy, but only this, just this last month. And then, um, Bartlesville has pretty mu- much just had, has done what we've done. We've tried to get every day that we can with our students and if we need to go to distance learning, which we've had to a couple of times, uh, we've done so. So there's where we are and we are cautiously optimistic. So I'll talk to you just a little bit about our weekly totals. Okay. So this is actually the first week in February versus the first week in March. And I'm not going to read all those numbers to you, but if you, you can see in February, we had twenty-two positive cases versus three the first week of March. This is all from last week. Um, we had three contact tracing investigations the first week of March and we had nine the first week of February. We had two hundred and sixty kids affected in February, the first week versus fifty-one in March. So these numbers are promising and it follows the risk level and we, we can see that. And we were hoping for no contact tracing investigation today. We did have one at Washington Preschool. And actually, we would have converted, um, those kids, um, back to the classroom, transitioned them back to the classroom today. So we just kind of evened out. So there's where we are, but it, it looks promising. Uh, we're not going to get panic over, um, different strains of COVID that could be coming along, but we will continue with our mitigation. And a lot of people ask, when are we going to quit wearing masks when the CDC recommends that? And the CDC actually, um, put out some guidance that you can gather in small groups in your home with people other than your family, other, without masks. Now, most people do that anyway, but that's a CDC guidance. So we, we want to keep our momentum and we'll keep on with our mitigation strategies. Uh, here's our current site data and this is actually not as of four thirty today because I didn't get it updated, but this was as of yesterday. Um, we only have staff out at Washington Pre-K and we thought they were coming back, but they went back out again. Uh, Trout and West Middle School. And at any given time during the year, we had staff out affected by COVID. Uh, all of our student percentages out who were either out on isolation or quarantine or in the single digits with the exception of Washington Pre-K, and that's just a class. We have, we have eleven, eleven classrooms over there, so when one's out, it's ten percent or more that's out. Uh, we didn't have any family close contacts today?
Yes, we had a late one.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah.
So all, so all day, how many were affected? Uh, twenty?
Uh, nineteen, twenty-two.
Okay. Some of those kids weren't, um, weren't exposed on Thursday and Friday, so we will send them to other classrooms at the Pre-K center. We don't want to send the entire people home that weren't exposed to COVID. Uh, and we go back forty-eight hours and we're identified over the, we were notified over the weekend. It was not a student. It was a staff member. Uh, and I'll talk to you a little bit about vaccines, but when our staff have been vaccinated, fully vaccinated with their booster on day eleven, they don't have to quarantine anymore. So it, with our elementary staff, that could help because we automatically transition the teacher too, but that means they could come to work and, and teach if they've had the vaccine. And obviously, our elementary kids aren't going to have the vaccine by now. So things are looking pretty good. I kind of hated that we had a contact trace today, but we had one last Monday as well too, so right off the bat. And this is, I've shared this with you before. This is our district-wide trend data for first semester, which I won't go over that. Pink, the ten thirty was the October ice storm and our numbers went way down. And then we were on distance learning, our holiday, uh, from twelve-four through the end of the year. So obviously, those numbers were down. At eleven thirteen was when we were our highest and if you remember, that's when we went to full-distance learning from that time through the remainder of the semester. It was twenty-two days. Uh, here's where we are. Here's our trend data for this semester. Two twelve and two nineteen reflected the winter storm that was uncharacteristic. We missed nine days. We came back on Friday controversially, but we made it. And, um, so we wanted to get our kids in school and you can see that that was our lowest week. Of course, our kids weren't here to be in contact with each other. When we started back in January, we had pretty low percentages and then once we gathered more, you can see as how they go up. And then we hit a low, but we really haven't been doing a lot of, uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's looked good. So we'll see what the rest of the week holds. Uh, we're just being cautiously optimistic, but things look better. And we think that's a combination. I'm no scientist, but just studying it. Um, the forced social distancing of those two weeks, people actually stayed in and stayed away from each other, plus the vaccines, plus the number of people who have had COVID at this point. We have so many kids that when someone tests positive, they may be exempt from quarantine because they're exempt for ninety days. We have kids that'll be exempt all the way through the end of the school year because we don't even have ninety days left in the school year. So that's making a difference too. Uh, let me tell you about our vaccination pro- progress. We have four hundred and sixty-five interested employees or sixty-six percent of our total employees. And these peop- sixty-six percent of these people have been vaccinated with dose one. That's of all seven hundred five employees. We have some that are waiting to get their first dose because they received the B A M infusion or their doctor suggested they wait for ninety days. We have, a lot of our people who are not interested in the vaccination are women of childbearing years. We have some pregnant women who are actually taking the vaccination and it just depends on what their doctors have said. And, and I monitor this pretty closely. There may be some more out there who have gotten the vaccine that I don't know about. Of these four hundred and sixty-five, two hundred and forty-three are fully vaccinated. Uh, that's with their initial and booster. And that was as of last night, so I haven't updated it. We had a vaccine clinic today, a dose two clinic at K County Health Department. So we have nineteen that we can add to that two forty-three who are fully vaccinated. And then I sent one person who was a hard no. She's been a hard no through this whole thing. She decided she wanted to get the vaccination. So I sent one person today for dose one. So actually, we have four hundred and sixty-six employees who have been vaccinated for the first dose after today. I wanted to see who showed up and they all did. Um, you never know if they, if they're sick or if they test positive for COVID, they can't get the vaccination. So, or if they're in quarantine, if someone in their house tests positive. So I kind of wait till the last minute to update those. On Friday, the twelfth, the Friday before spring break, we have a dose two Moderna clinic at White Eagle Health Center. That's almost one hundred people. It's a Friday and Fridays are a struggle for us anyway for substitutes, but most of these are support staff. So we had to rearrange our transportation and our C M P people so they're not on routes or serving breakfast or lunch. So we did some adjusting and they go to White Eagle. It starts at seven, ends about eleven-thirty. I went last Friday to White Eagle and it runs like clockwork. They have it down to a T. Then, um, this wasn't real popular, but we have a dose two Pfizer clinic at six, at P sixty-six on, next Thursday, the Thursday of spring break. So, um, that's, people will just remain in town and, and we only had a couple of conflicts. People had made plans to go out of state, but P sixty-six has worked with them and I had them schedule that on their own. For the most part, our employees said, hey, we don't want to travel until we have both doses anyway. So that's where we are and I know that you all feel this way and I cannot thank K County Health Department, Phillips sixty-six, and White Eagle Health Center enough for ensuring that our staff are vaccinated. And you might, you all might not even know this, but, uh, the K County Health Department was running low on Pfizer vaccines and that's all Phillips sixty-six got. So they're tag-teaming with each other. Got their first dose at K County Health Department and then going to Phillips. And I mean, all I have to do is text any one of those people directing those initiatives and, and they've got us. I mean, they are taking care of us. It's, it's amazing.
That's good to hear. And do you, do you know how other comparable districts, how their staff is getting our, their vaccination progress?
Well, I know that, and I thought about this when the teacher portion opened up. I believe that was on February twenty-second. A lot of districts are partnering, partnering with health, healthcare providers and they're doing Saturday clinics or one-day clinics on-site. And I thought to myself, how easy would that have been just to get everybody in on one day? And now it's just a management issue and it's tracking all the time. But then again, our first dose was on one twelve. We don't know how many health issues, uh, were, were alleviated or even we may have saved lives. So, you know, we, we talked about one situation, it, three more weeks. And, and David would have had both of his boosters or had had his booster, both of his shots, so.
Nancy, some of the bigger schools in Tulsa actually closed school down for teacher vaccination days.
Oh, they did? Bartlesville did.
Did Bartlesville do it also?
On the first day, the, a- a- even after they were closed for the two weeks of the winter wonderland and, and then the following Monday, they closed down when it opened up for vaccination. So we haven't closed one day for, um, vaccines and we don't want to because we manage. Friday is going to be tricky. If it weren't support staff, there's no way we could manage it. And actually, the, the clinic we had today could have been set on Friday, but it's nineteen more certified people that we couldn't afford to have out now. They're liable to have some side effects and they might not be here tomorrow, but I also track that and I look and see who's put in for sick leave, which I do every day. I look to see who's in the district and who's not, not because I'm trying to monitor, but just to know who's here and who's not. If they, I know if they got their vaccine because I'm managing that and color coding it. And it, it's about, it's typically people over fifty or if they've had COVID and it's only probably three a clinic. So it's very few people.
That are.
I got, Friday, I talked to several via email. I had my second dose at White Eagle and, and I, I would have come to school, but I got up and it, and I, yeah, I was fatigued. got up and it, and I, yeah, I was fatigued and had a big headache, so we have two or three gone, so we won't have all nineteen gone tomorrow, but we'll have some gone tomorrow, for sure. It just affects people differently. I've heard that people two weeks out are still feeling achy and... They say, when you have big side effects, that really means it's building up those immunities, but...
It hurt.
But it's amazing, the, the, the longer I was awake, the better I felt. So, a little groggy at first. Oh, and we are bringing this to you. Uh, in November, um, we voted, or the board voted, to extend the Coronavirus Response Act, Emergency Family Leave. Uh, it actually ended, expired on twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty for all public entities, and our board took action and extended that through spring break Friday, which is three-twelve. So, uh, it expires. Um, we, we realize as school employees, it's necessary to continue on to this leave, and here's one thing that's really getting us. Our secondary people are not close contacts. They have learned to not be close contacts. You know, we, we've worked with them, whatever you do, stay six feet apart, no matter what. But where it gets us with our secondary people is last week, we had a pre-K class close, and two of those pre-K students had teachers, one at a middle school and one at a high school. So, they were out with emergency leave. So, that's how it affects our secondary people. We're not seeing as many employees out, typically those that haven't had it. Uh, you all approved for this to occur through March the twelfth at our January eleventh meeting. Now, there, you approved this with the following modifications. Emergency sick leave and emergency FMLA may be denied by the superintendent or the designee. So, we talked about this last time, if they're on quarantine and, um, they're at, I don't know, vintage days or a fair of the heart, we, we can deny that. We haven't denied any at this point, or we did?
Yes, we have, uh, yes, there has been, uh, new situations, yes, it was.
Okay. I just must have forgotten about that one. Uh, our emergency sick leave and emergency FMLA must be approved by the superintendent or the designee, so that would be me or Curtis. And, uh, it may be denied if approving the leave puts a hardship on the district. Now, I know.
That was the reason.
Okay, reason number three. It wasn't because they were out and about where they shouldn't be, but it did put a hardship on the district for them to be out. And I tell you, our fill rates have been as low as thirty percent at some of our sites, and on the other hand, our people have not been gone, haven't missed as much. Now, they've missed because of COVID, because they were in quarantine or in isolation, but our schools have pulled out all the stops to cover, which in turn hurts our interventions and special ed programs because we have to utilize those people to cover classes, so. Uh, we are going to recommend, or I am recommenda- recommending that you approve this leave through May twenty-one, last day of school with the previously approved modifications. It's on the agenda after executive session, so we don't have to take action right now. Okay, that's pretty long. Any questions, comments?
Do the staff members have to exhaust all of their current leave before they are...
No, they have ten days of emergency leave, and typically, that's all they're out, especially if they test positive for COVID, because then they're exempt. Uh, no, they use our, they use the emergency leave before they tap into their own leave. So, very few have, we've had three or four that have had to tap into their own leave.
We've had, we've had a small handful that have had to tap into their own leave, um, for various reasons, but in most cases, when they have to go to the FMLA portion of it, they have to set out, have to use ten days of their own leave for that emergency sick leave. So, very, very few times someone has to pull into their leave. Question with teachers, I mean, they're, they must have gone out of their way.
It typically happens with people who've had other health issues or other surgeries or something that have had to utilize that leave. Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Rowland.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Shelley. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items that were non-controversial, it's the agenda with commentary, the minutes from the previous meeting, contracts, we had very few of those. We have a under ten thousand dollar Trackett, which is the reporting for maintenance issues, three or four fundraisers, baseball, instrumental music, DECA. Uh, we bought or leased some copiers. We have the high school yearbook, uh, one net, the ratification to continue with the internet provider to get the E-rate, and that would be it. So, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items one, two, and three.
Move for approval for consent agenda number six.
I second.
Motion from Dawn, Jan, and a second from Nancy. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, and there will be a motion required to consider and take action on the following financial district reports. These are the same standard-formatted reports that we talked about in the Finance Committee, uh, the Treasurers Report, Booster Club Activity, Bond Reports, and as Curtis always likes, the approval of the payroll, because that's a very big one. Everybody likes that one. Motion to approve. Have a motion from Dawn to approve item seven in its entirety, uh, item one.
Second.
Second from Judy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. Ruth?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye. Number two, consider and take action on receiving the annual audit report. That's the one Pam just gave to us. I think all board members have received a copy. Are there any questions or comments on it?
Good for it. Motion approved.
Have a motion from Dawn to approve, a second.
I'll second.
Second from Nancy. Call for the vote, Jan.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number three, consider and take action on revisions to board policy, seven-point-two-eight dash one-point-oh extracurricular activities, student alcohol and drug testing. Curtis or Jason, you want to make a comment on that one? What we're doing?
I'm...
Well, we, that's why we brought Jason here, so we'll let him...
Um, the drug testing policy, we found, um, is, is very hard to be...
Equitable.
... spread across all sports and all activities. Um, what we had in the past was twenty-five percent, fifty percent, and then twelve counter months, and that was always cumulative. This new or revised policy is, is the first time, is thirty days out of competition, you still get to practice. Um, the reason for that is because we fill our coaches and our, our staff members over these kids in extracurricular, can still mentor the kids to go to their, their intervention courses. Um, and then, the next offense would be a cumulative eighteen weeks. Now, the only time that that can roll over is if a student gets, fills a second drug test in the same school year, it could carry over into the fall. So, again, it's, it's more, it's more encompassing for all programs instead of trying to determine how much twenty-five percent of a season for football or twenty-five percent of basketball is, or even you look at fine arts, what is twenty-five percent of fine ar- fine arts because it's...
All year.
So, now, it's more...
Cheering high steppers, too.
It, it better fits the big picture of, of what we're trying to do with drug testing. And again, it's, it's just extracurricular students, uh, something that we've been doing for a long time, and, uh, it's just an adjustment, and, and we feel like it's, it's better for the kids. Um, shows them that if you make a mistake early on, you can redeem yourself, it's not going to hurt you. Let's say you filled one as a freshman, and then you fill another one as a junior, and possibly a senior, you're done for your whole senior year. So, this way, it starts anew. It's a fresh start for kids every single year, but it also holds the kids to a high standard of being student leaders amongst their peers in the classroom.
Okay, I think it's important to note here, this is the testing policy, not if you're caught with drugs or alcohol. There's other ways. The other thing that's really critical in this policy, we're taking the word alcohol out of it because we do not test for alcohol. If you're a minor in possession or you're caught with alcohol, there's other disciplinary policies that handle that one. So, this is strictly now going to be a drug testing policy. And Jason's working on another contract for the students to write that has to do with non-testing, but you get, you get caught by the police or disciplinary actions, or you yell at the co- I mean, bad things, there's, there's different degrees of other things that can happen that he's working on that contract. We're still going to keep the policy where it, before you're suspended from a team, it takes multiple people on a committee, same thing that we wrote a couple of years ago. Uh, it will be an odd number of people on that committee. But the key here, this is strictly for drug testing. Our policy didn't match up with what we're actually implementing.
Move for approval.
Have a motion to approve item three.
I'll second that. Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll second.
And a second from Anna. Jan, comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. True?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number four, arbitrage rebate services. I had to talk to Brenda about this one, but I now understand what this one is all about. Probably nobody else in the room, but Brenda really understands it. When you do a lease revenue bond, such as we did, if the lease revenue bond is over ten thousand, ten million dollars, you have IRS requirements and IRS forms that you have to fill out to make sure that you didn't float a bond issue, and you're sitting back making this big exorbitant profit from the interest. It's basically to make sure, and that's what arbitrage is about, to make sure that you're using the money as you said you're going to use it. Of course, we don't get point oh-five or one percent right now, so it'd be kind of foolish to do it any other way. So, basically, Ron Fisher with our bonding agency recommended we use this company who will fill out the federal forms, the IRS forms, who will take care of and do it for us and keep us from trying to lumber through all the problems that you have with the forms. This is a company that, this is what they do for a living.
Brenda, who did we use before, Muni Services?
Um, I'm not even sure who we used before, it, that was so long ago.
We haven't done one in nine years.
Oh, okay.
Over ten million dollars.
Okay.
This was, Brenda, you've been here a lot longer. Isn't this the first lease revenue bond we have done?
This is the first lease revenue.
Yeah, I didn't think...
The other ones that we had to do arbitrage on, we sold sixteen million at one time, and so that's when we made the decision to always stay below that ten million, so we didn't have to do the arbitrage.
I see.
But this one was twenty-eight, thirty million, something like that.
With lease revenue, you always have to do that because they're, I mean, they're large, that's the purpose of them.
Okay.
So, with that, I'd look for a motion to approve item A.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion from Anna, second from...
I'll second.
Judy. Call for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. True?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B and C, we'll talk about together. These are the active panels, the big panels that the teachers use in their classrooms. Item B is for four of them that I believe Phillips sixty-six is paying for them through the STEM program, their gifts. Item C is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand for fifty-two of these. These will come from CARES, S R, two money. I call it CARES money.
We do too.
What does S R stand for?
Uh, Elementary Secondary something Education, yeah, Schools Education Act.
Okay. So, this will be some federal funding that we'll get for this, and you might want to, real briefly, this CARES money, there's what, three different categories the expenditures have to be in?
We, we have to answer questions to prepare, prevent, and respond, and if we can answer any of those questions, they're allowable costs. There are some things that we know that aren't allowable, and we've had a lot of trainings and know what is and is not allowable, and our district directors have met, we met all day with principals, and one of the allowable costs is to support specific sites on their needs, so we'll bring that to you next month.
And like Brett can buy school buses, but he can't buy activity buses out of CARES two money.
Are the active panels, what did they used to be called?
Promedial boards, and see, that's an active panel.
I know, I know what they are, I just thought, we're changing the names all the time.
I didn't know what active panels were at first either, Judy, I had to ask what they were.
More in, in a lot of, a lot, we don't have these on a refreshal. We didn't in the past. We do now, we put them on refresh, but until we can get a lot of these replaced, we're never going to catch up, so just because they become obsolete.
How many total we have, Ryan, in the district?
One in every classroom.
Yeah, one in every core classroom, plus, um, maybe, there's, because there's been some that, some of the sites have bought their own, but what we've been replacing out of technology is just the core classroom, so.
Well, they're amazing, I couldn't have taught...
With a, with a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety, however many we're buying, this ought to get us awful close.
Yeah, it'll get us caught up on our refresh, then then we're not to make sure everything's up to date.
Okay, so with that, I'd look, we need a motion to approve items B and C.
I'll make a motion to approve items B and C for the active panels.
Have a motion from Judy, and a second from...
Anna.
Anna. Call for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. True?
Aye.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye. Motion carries. Item D and the, D is the po-high yearbooks. This was no cost to the district, which, because it is paid out of activity funds, basically, the students pay for their own yearbooks. Have a motion to approve item D.
Can we do all three of them?
Uh...
This is one item.
Okay, we could do, D is the yearbooks, E is the municipal accounting system software that was the, um, the one you used, isn't it, Brenda?
Uh-huh, all our business department uses that payroll.
Uh, that is item E. Item F is the agreement with Stephen McDonald, this is the Ron Fisher Group out of Oklahoma City, that will be selling bonds for us, uh, when we run another bond issue, and we pay them a fee based on the value of the bonds. So, with that, I'd look for a motion for items D, E, and F.
I'll move, approve.
Have a motion from Dawn to approve D, E, and F. And a second from...
I'll go ahead and second it.
Nancy. Call for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. Zemrichi?
Aye.
Mrs. True?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom? Aye.
Motion carries. Number five, consider and take action to accept bids from Rick Scott Construction for a hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for the new child nutrition building renovation. Brett, you want to briefly bring Anna up to speed on what we're doing here?
The old unemployment office down next to West Middle School, we've been using it for storage and nothing else. We decided to use it for our child nutrition offices, so it's going to take this amount of money to renovate that. It's, you know, pretty, pretty bad shape, so structurally, it's fine, we're going to do just as soon as the insights to get it ready to go to move them from where they are until we're there.
How large is the staff?
There will, there's going to be four or five in there. Be five in there. And then they use a large open space for some of their meetings with the whole staff.
Okay.
The theory is where they are now will be demolished, that building, assuming we go forward with the bond issue for use of the facilities north of Sullen Stadium. I'll explain that one to you later, what we're planning on there.
How many bids did you get on this?
Three.
Three?
It was, it was interesting, and it was pleasing. We had four people interested. Three showed up with bids, and one of them was from Yukon. I'm not sure why they came out of the woodwork, do that, and we're glad that they did.
Were the, were the other three from Pompka City?
Yes.
All of them?
So do I have a motion to approve item D?
Yes, I have. Motion approved, number five.
Have a motion from Dawn, a second from?
Judy.
Judy. Call for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruth?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number six, and we do need a short executive session. Motion to convene an executive session for the following purposes. Excuse me. Discuss the possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report. That was in the document that you received, Anna. To discuss negotiations, to discuss the purchase appraisal of real property, and to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation.
Make a motion.
Have a motion from Anna to move to executive session.
Second.
Second from Dawn. Call for the vote, Jan.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruth?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Motion carries. They will like that. Consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. That was on everybody's heat.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve it, number 10.
I'll second.
Second from Anna. Jan?
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Motion carries. They will like that. Consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. That was on everybody's heat.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve it, number 10.
I'll second.
Second from Anna. Jan?
Mrs. Rowland?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mrs. Ruth?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Shelley, do we have any new business?
No new business.
Anna, real quick, what new business?
New business is something that comes up that we have no knowledge about for the previous 24 hours. It can only occur in the 24 hours. So if we forget something, too bad. If we knew about it, it just can't go on, new business. Sometimes that will come up, yes. Sometimes that will come up if we get a new applicant, and we want to make a hire, that we, and we go 24/7. So if it happens like on a Sunday, we might recommend a hire.
So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn from Dawn? Second from?
Judy.
Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. We're adjourned.